Hello, try this one more time. Okay, I couldn't hear myself. Okay, there we go. The Board of Supervisors came out of closed session and we added addendum one to three A. Under one A, we update was given confidential minutes, two A was approved. And three A, direction given to staff. So please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands on one nation under God, indivisible, the liberty and justice for all.
Public matter is not on the agenda, discussion items only, no action to be taken. Any person may address the board at this time upon any subject within the jurisdiction of Amador County Border Supervisors. However, any matter that requires action may be referred to staff and/or committee for a report, recommendation for possible action at subsequent board meeting. Please note there's a three minute timeline. Any public comment? Zoom?
Thank you, we do have one comment via Zoom. Mr. Sanders, please go ahead when ready.
Good morning, Board of Supervisors, this is Amador County Veteran Service Officer Terry Sanders, I'm glad to be here.
Sounds good.
And I'd just like to put a jab in for upcoming Veterans Day on Saturday, the November eleventh. Remind everybody that we're having a parade downtown Jackson that kicks off at ten AM. And then following that parade, lunch provided at the Legion Hall.
And I'll be driving the red Cadillac with the grand marshal.
Awesome, thank you.
Anything else, sir?
Nope.
Excellent.
You're welcome.
Supervisor Neto?
Yes, I'd like to address the tragic event in Ione the other day. First, I'd like to say I don't blame our judges, they have to obey the law. I blame what we've put into society is I think we should bring back capital punishment. There's a time and a place for it. And we should bring that back and take care of some problems. Also, I'd like to have a moment of silence for the family that lost their mother and their loved one in Ione, this tragic event.
Okay, moment of silence, please. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other, for any other supervisors? Okay, go on to the approval of the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Call for the vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, under the consent agenda, we need to pull item four I.
We don't need to, we can approve it with everything else, I'm just, we're replacing the invoice that was included in your packet with one that's a corrected version that actually includes sales tax. That was an error before, but it's pretty minor compared to the overall.
Okay, so we're not pulling four, we're just adjusting the information.
Correct.
We are adding addendum number two to be added to the consent agenda, so that is two A addendum to four L. Jackson Valley Fire Protection District, approval of the following individual to Jackson Valley Fire Protection District Directors, Mr. Patrick Thomas for a four year term.
Thompson.
Thompson, excuse me, sorry.
I'll make the motion to approve.
Let me give you this one, say, anybody in the public want to say anything? Anybody on Zoom?
No, not at this time.
Okay, I will take that.
Okay, I'll make the motion to approve with those changes.
Second.
Okay. Call for the vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we are on to regular agenda, three A. Administrative Agency Presentation and Adoption Resolution, celebrating and raising the awareness of National Adoption Day and Child in Foster Care in Amador County. Do we have anybody presenting on this?
Maybe.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Morning.
I'm Farah Roberts and I am the Program Manager for the Court of Deputy Special Advocates Program in Amador County.
Welcome.
And here to present today the idea of Adoption Day, which is a national recognition of children who are in foster care who need loving and supportive families to take on the role of being their forever families, once they've gone through the foster care systems and they're no longer able to return to their biological families. So the National Adoption Day was founded because sometimes, you know, through the process of the court system, things kind of get delayed. And it was to hopefully open up the court to be able to have more adoptions. And to also just let the community know that there are needs for children to have a forever homes. We do have children in the waiting list here in Amador County looking for ever homes. And we're hoping that by just raising awareness that through many agencies in the area, we support children in foster care, but we also support families through adoption and then post adoption. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, the supervisors? Okay, public? Zoom?
Not at this time.
Okay, I'll read the resolution. Resolution proclaiming November sixteenth, twenty twenty-three is Adoption Day in Amador County. Whereas Amador County recognizes the importance of giving child children safe, loving and permanent families through adoption. And whereas more than a hundred and thirteen thousand children in the United States foster care system are waiting for permanent families. And whereas there are children in Amador County who are waiting for their permanent families. And whereas the Superior Court of Amador County will open its doors on November sixteenth, twenty twenty-three to finalize adoptions of local children and join other organizations to celebrate all adoptions. And whereas this effort, along with the similar celebrations in all fifteen states, will offer children the chance to live with stable, loving families and encourage their dedicated individuals to make a powerful difference in the lives of children through foster care adoption. Therefore, be it resolved by the Amador County Border Supervisors does hereby proclaim that November sixteenth, twenty twenty-three be declared National Adoption Day in Amador County. And in doing so, invite all citizens to join in a nation effort, nation effort to raise awareness about the importance of foster care adoption. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Call for the vote, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? That's the best part of being Chair of the Board. Okay, well, on to three B, Presentation Update on Meals on Wheels Program by Chris Colton, Executive Director of Amador Senior Center.
Morning, Chris.
All right, good morning, it's good to see all of you this morning, gentlemen.
Morning.
Thanks for having me here to sort of give you a little update on what's happening. I have one of the best jobs in the world, I truly do, to carry out these programs. And I am so grateful on behalf of the center for your support and ownership of this program by financially committing to it. I just want to review a few things about Meals on Wheels within Amador County for you to refamiliarize yourself with the program. Last year, we served two hundred and thirty-two clients, not every single one of those clients, of course, receives a meal every day. But they take advantage of the program based upon their need or what's happening. Some folks deal with hospital stays that then require them to have some assistance when they get home. So not all of these clients are everyday or sort of permanent clients, but sometimes occasional clients based upon need. Which we offer kind of two, two programs that run in parallel to each other. One is funded through the Older Americans Act, which that funding comes through the state of California, through the California Department of Aging and then to Area Twelve Agency on Aging. And then ultimately, those contracts are decided by the agency for each county. And Amador Senior Center maintains the contract with Area Twelve for Meals on Wheels. And that particular stream of funding requires that we present to our clients the opportunity to participate financially. And so they are given the opportunity to participate at four dollars per meal. But no services are refused for an inability to pay. The second sort of parallel program that runs in conjunction with this program is our privately funded program. And it's for those that don't qualify for the Area Twelve stream of funding. Or they do not meet the criteria for the Area Twelve stream of funding, yet need in some way assistance. And so we privately fund that through our own fundraising efforts and various streams of income to make that happen. And to help offset costs, we look for a maximum of a seven dollar contribution. So that's why you see a bit of a gamut there as far as a request for contribution based upon the streams of funding and the requirements that those streams maintain for us. Just to remind you again that this is a daily hot delivered meal, which I think makes this county a great place to retire and a great place to look to retire because of the support systems in place. And you're a part of making that happen as county supervisors in funding this program. Far too often, these programs in other counties are moving toward frozen foods. In Sacramento County and some of the larger outlying urban areas, the meals have gone toward frozen because of the inexpense of delivery systems versus a freshly prepared hot meal. If you can imagine the increasing personnel costs over the last two years, three years, the inflationary costs on food and fuel alone, those are all three big areas that hit us hard. And so it stands to reason that some entities and organizations other than ours would move toward a frozen delivery concept because it elongates time between delivery. But this is every day, every day our clients see us, every day we interact with them, every day we can support them and connect them to other resources within the community, whether through government agencies like Behavioral Health or Adult Protective Services or through other nonprofit organizations within the community. So every day we have that opportunity to have that connection with them and to refer them. And that's why it's so important to maintain that hot meal delivered. The clients would also argue it's better food, I think, versus a frozen meal. The other thing that we offer through this program is pet support. We provide food and supplies to those pets through a different grant. None of the funds that the county produces for us or gives to us go toward our pet program, that is a separate funded program. I just want to make that clear to the community, but it is something we offer that ties in with this program very nicely because we don't want clients shortchanging their own health and nutrition to take care of their pets. And many might if it came down to it. So we want to make sure that, that the pets are taken care of alongside the client. And then we offer a peer visitor program too, where we provide a deeper social connection rather than just the daily through their driver. But a volunteer through the center will come and meet with them every other week or whatever schedule they work out with that client just to provide the social connection to sit and, and have a meal or chat with them at a longer period of time than what a driver can give. So that's one of the programs we offer as well, as the welfare check every single day. So in the numbers that I'm about to show you, it's very easy, I think, to look at the numbers and think, okay, here are the amount of meals they delivered. And it's a wonderful thing to deliver that many meals, but I think what I want the county to see and our residents to see is that every single meal we deliver is all of these things as well. It's way more than just a hot meal. And so to kind of give you an overview of what we were able to do, I'm clicking, it's not going.
Pointed at the projector.
Projector?
There you go.
Okay, so I went too far. All right, thank you for that tip. So for fiscal year twenty twenty-two through twenty-three, which runs July first through June thirtieth, we delivered seven thousand five hundred and sixty-two meals. And for this fiscal year, quarter one, July first through September thirtieth, oh, now it's jumping around again on me. Okay, so Q one being July first through September thirtieth, we delivered seven thousand five hundred and sixty-two meals. And for Q one this year, we delivered nine thousand one hundred and ninety-one meals. And again, that increase is made possible because of the funding the county provides alongside other revenue streams that, that we try to secure. So for fiscal year, which runs July first through June thirtieth, we were able to deliver for Q one, July one through September thirtieth, we were able to, to utilize two hundred and twelve and a half volunteer hours. And unfortunately, I really expected when I was pulling these stats together to see that go up along with our meals, but it actually went down. And it's very unfortunate because every volunteer hour that is decreased toward the center means that we take on a greater burden when it comes to the personnel necessary to make this happen. So we had to use a greater number of personnel hours in Q one this year than we did last year. And so I would implore anybody in the community who's interested in volunteering or looking for a way to serve to make an impact in this community. I will tell you this, every volunteer who gives of their time comes to me and says, when I'm thanking them profusely for volunteering, they all say, we get way more out of it than what we give. And so if any older adult out there, anybody who's got a car and willing to help, you will receive more from this program if you give of your time than you will, than you will give to a senior. And yet, it's very transformative for seniors' lives as well. But we saw a decrease down to a hundred and seventy-six point nine one volunteer hours for this last quarter one of the fiscal year. So we'd love to see that number go in reverse as our meal deliveries go up. Now, this is the really exciting slide. What do the volunteers do? Yeah, that's a great question, thank you supervisor. So our volunteers do everything from helping the kitchen to package the meals and prepare them for delivery to actually doing the delivery. And I think the most rewarding piece of it for people is, is actually doing the delivery service, packing the meals into the car, receiving a ledger of deliveries and then executing those deliveries by going to clients' homes, learning their names, getting to know them, delivering the meal, having a two or three minute chat about the weather, about how they're doing, what other resources they might need, and then continuing on from there. So that's one way people can serve. And we have vehicles that people can use, but we're limited by vehicles, so sometimes a volunteer will use their own vehicle. And, and we tend to honor those volunteers either through a mileage reimbursement or a gas card if they choose to help offset expenses of volunteering.
I remember years back, you had one older lady and she was just, she was something else. I mean, you talk about having everything under control and she was going a hundred miles an hour and just, she was, she was something, she was wonderful.
She was definitely not going a hundred miles an hour on county roads, that's prohibited.
No, I meant.
I know, I know.
Figuratively speaking.
Yes, of course.
Chris, why, why do you think the volunteer hours went down because coming out of COVID, people going back to work or what?
Well, what's surprising to you supervisor is that the hours that I showed you in the prior quarter were post-COVID as well. So I don't think I would blame COVID, I couldn't tell you. I know that we have an ebb and flow of volunteers just based upon their own issues. I can tell you this, that the bulk of our volunteers are older adults themselves who take ownership of this program. And sometimes they have their own health issues or they have something that happens where they can't do it anymore.
Hey, what time's lunch today? At the Senior Center?
At the center, it runs from eleven thirty to twelve thirty, that's our coggrate program, it's delicious meal.
And you gotta go on rib day, rib day is outstanding.
I'm just gonna challenge the rest of the board to go today if we get out in time. There it is, guys.
You're more than welcome to come. The last statistic there that I think is really impressive is this year, we're already in this, when I say year to date, we're talking the end of October. So this doesn't include November, December numbers yet, of course, because they haven't come, but we delivered thirty-one thousand. So already this year, we delivered more than the entirety of last year, last calendar year. So that's pretty impressive and I think again speaks to the, to the support that we so appreciate coming from all of you. And I would take it a step further supervisor Onetto and invite each of you, if you would like to do a ride along, we'd love to have you come. We'll put you in your district if you'd like to meet some of your constituents who are on our program. And if you're able bodied enough, our driver will take you and you can walk up to the door and, and deliver that meal. I think it'd be really great for you to, to interact with some of the clients and, and see firsthand the investment that you're making and how worthwhile it is. So thank you for the, allowing me to present and are there any further questions you might have for me?
I'd just like to say thanks, you know, it seems like you're doing a really good job.
Yeah, no, I'd say the same, it seems like you're, you're doing well over there. And I like animals and old people and others are okay.
What's your next area you're looking up for expansion? Do you go to River Pines and outlying areas, Comanche?
Yeah, that's a great question. Our expansion is related directly to our infrastructure and our funding, which is no surprise to you. However, we are committed to delivering in all of Amador County, we have clients in River Pines and Plymouth and some of those very outlying areas. And we do have clients, of course, in Pioneer and some of those deeper areas that, that tend to get a lot of snow. Last year was very exciting, I'm not looking forward to this year. But we do now have two delivery trucks that are four wheel drive, which we did not have access to last year. And so we're expecting to be able to be more successful at deliveries this year. But a lot of our clients last year, which was interesting, were surprised to see us when they saw how much snowfall had, had come down. But yes, to answer your question, we try to press into every area and we don't refuse service. We have clients out as far as Comanche as well that we serve.
Plus last year, you had CHP helping you.
We did.
Deliver some meals.
You caught news of that, did you?
I did.
We, we have contacted different partners within the community to help us if there are road closures or if we have some sort of emergency and we get clever about it. And I tell you, we're very grateful for the support of this community because these programs wouldn't exist without the community's ownership through volunteerism, through coming through in a difficult time for us like the CHP did that one time. Yeah, it's nice to roll through blue and red lights, you can get there quicker.
Today at the Senior Center is stuffed shells with creamy pesto sauce, spinach salad, garlic green beans, banana and garlic bread.
Excellent, and tomorrow is rib day.
And tomorrow's rib day.
You won't find parking, so I would park here at the county building and walk over.
What do you have that, Mr.?
Are you serious? What's that?
Do you have that bookmarked?
I have it emailed.
All right.
Chairman, our Rotary Club members did one when they started the Pine Grove expansion. And one thing you didn't mention that I thought was very interesting, not so much that they got more out of it than the clients, but when they first went to the house, they found a lot of them in bathrobes and a little disheveled and the newspaper laying around and the more often they went, the house was picked up. And a lot of times the table was already set and it just kind of improved their quality of life knowing that somebody was coming over. Which is kind of a substandard but important thing, you know, maybe they took a shower that day and they noticed it right off, so.
Yes, and Supervisor Crew, you bring up a great point that again, reiterating, we need the community's support. Jackson Rotary has been a huge supporter of us and actually probably little known to the community, helped us launch Pine Grove, as you said. We couldn't have gotten that off the ground without Jackson Rotary's help, just committing to driving for that period of time. We got it off the ground, it's one of our biggest delivery areas, as it's the largest concentration of older adults in Amador County. So it was an important region for us and I want to thank Jackson Rotary. But it just goes to show, without community partners, we couldn't do this. So as much as I'm grateful for sort of the praise you heap on me standing here for our accomplishments, it's really. accomplishments, it's really the accomplishment of our community and and our board supervisors in our county, again, making this a great place to live and retire.
Do we have anybody on Zoom?
Thank you, Ms. Damiano. Please go ahead when ready.
Yes, this is Lorraine Damiano from Public Authority. I want to thank you for everything you do, especially providing meals for our senior citizens. I do have one question, and I do have some volunteers that are interested. Is there a food handler certificate that's needed to help assist preparing the food and delivering?
So to answer your question, we have to maintain somebody in the kitchen with a food manager's certificate, which we have. And then we have to put each volunteer who directly handles food through the food handler's certificate, which is different than the manager's. It's about a two- to three-hour course all online. And then a volunteer would also have to go through our quarterly training in how to handle food safely alongside of some of the required training around document security because when we deal with clients, medical and health-related issues in regard to their intake forms, say they need a meal that is medically tailored, that's now medical information and becomes, we become HIPAA compliant. So there are some trainings that have to go around sort of HIPAA compliance and making sure that 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 information is kept secure outside of just food handling.
Wonderful. Thank you so much for your time and again, for everything that you do for for our constituents.
Thank you.
Thank you. Well, anybody else on Zoom?
No, not at this time.
Okay. Action, I mean.
I'd love to accept the report and direct staff to release 30,000 currently in the budget for this Amador Senior Center.
Okay. Call for the vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, gentlemen.
Thanks for the report.
Onto 3C, Environmental Health. Update on the micro-enterprise home kitchen operations, MECO pilot program, and options on renewal.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm Debbie Larson, Director of Environmental Health. The pilot program for the MECO Home Enterprise Kitchen Operations Program is ending shortly. And we do have two micro-enterprise, we call MECO, home kitchen operations in in Amador County. And they, their permit is set to expire in December. So we're here to get direction from the board on whether to cease the program or expand it or just continue as it is.
Have we had any complaints?
No, but we have, we haven't had any complaints and we haven't had a lot of inquiries about it. But we do have one site that does have a violation right now that they're working to resolve.
Okay.
What is the violation?
It's for not testing water.
Okay.
Is there, they're the?
They're on a well.
They're on a well and they need to do testing. So we're, her test actually may have gone in last week, but we don't have the results yet.
So is there two operations that are operating?
Mm-hmm. Two. One is very active on Facebook and you can look up and see how, you know, what kind of meal she's preparing. The other one doesn't have that presence on, at least we didn't see it on on social media, but it's still operating and also operates a catering business, but the catering is out of a separate location.
Yeah, I was just curious, you know, there's been no complaints, but well, are they operating? If they're operating, then, you know?
Yeah.
That's fine.
The one that I own, it actually probably costs her money because she she'll give food to people whether they can pay for it or not. So she's a very good person.
Yeah, and she she's, yeah, that operation seems to be running very well and very organized. They, you know, MECO can be problematic. We can't necessarily, there's not, there's not the checks and balances as a regular restaurant. We, things from an inappropriate source can come into that kitchen. The the MECO, though, does have to have direct sales to the customer, so they can't sell it to, say, a store and then have them sell it. So, you know, a consumer doesn't have to purchase that if they don't feel comfortable.
Okay.
It's different than cottage food. Cottage food is non-potentially hazardous food prepared at the home. It doesn't have the same risk factor, whereas a MECO, you, there's really no limitation. And they can have seating and you can, your home can actually be a restaurant.
Yeah, they are having multiple people, but in a way, if you if you look at it from another aspect, it's not too much different than having a company come over for a meal. I mean, it's probably more multiple.
It could be 30 meals a day.
Yeah.
Up to 60 a week.
Back to, any public comment? Anybody on Zoom?
Not at this time.
Well, currently, we don't have any that operate as a restaurant. Is that correct? They prepare the food and then they go out in the field, so to speak, and distribute it from like a food truck or something.
From the home, they actually, or they could do delivery.
Right, they do delivery now, so we don't really have like a situation where someone has people, because I guess that could be a problem is the parking and, you know, that that kind of situation.
And that's leading, leading into kind of one of my thoughts for Greg. I think I remember the answer from last time, just wanted to clarify it. So if we approve more and say it's somewhere down the road, these become a problem, the county could still pull them back, right?
So I, what I would say is if you issue a permit, and that's the way they are in the code, is there annual permits? So if you issue a permit and it's an annual permit, and then sometime within that year, you decide you don't want to continue the program, you can stop the program. I think that permit can, gets to continue its year that you authorize, but
Yeah.
it wouldn't, they wouldn't have an entitlement to go beyond. They'd have to reapply to renew it, but there wouldn't be a program, so they wouldn't be able.
So if you ran into a real problem within a year's time or less, you could stop it?
Just stop that one kitchen, not the whole program.
Right. Well, you could enforce the, well, yeah, you could do it that way, too.
Okay.
The way the code is, the way the ordinance was written, there's currently a limit of two.
Yes.
And it expires 18 months from when, it will expire 18 months automatically from when it was, when it became effective, which was July 14th of 2022.
I wouldn't mind expanding it some if there's no problems. I mean, I don't know how much demand you have for it, but.
We had an inquiry last week, but that was the second inquiry we've had in about a year.
Yeah.
We could take the pilot to four. Leave it as a pilot?
You could leave it as a pilot, you could expand it and extend, you know, sort of that automatic date as a pilot, however long you want, another year, another 18 months.
Well, how about through the end of 2024? So that we can just program it now, and if it's not problematic, we can come back and consider it next year to either leave it a pilot or make it a permanent program.
Right now, it's unclear exactly what action that you, the board has to take to extend it or expand it. So we're gonna assume that it's gonna have to be another ordinance. I'd like to change the wording so that we could extend it by resolution, make it a little bit easier.
That'd be fine.
So we'll bring back an amendment to this ordinance to expand to four and expand the term.
End of 2024.
Make the interim December 31 or 2024.
Yeah.
Do we have any ability to limit or constrain how the food is provided or or is this all state law?
I think the, I think the state law defines what a
Whatever.
micro-enterprise kitchen is. You're either gonna allow it or not allow it.
Okay, so we can't say you, you can't have a restaurant in the middle of a neighborhood? You have to always just, you know, distribute it?
Okay, you're either in or out.
Okay.
But at only 30 meals, that's still not a whole huge amount.
Well, but that could be every day.
Right.
Uh, 60 meals max a week.
Oh, 60 ma- meals?
This is only in the unincorporated area, right?
No, I think it's County One.
Yeah, it was County One.
Oh, is it? So it would be in the cities, too.
That's why the city managers are scared to death of it.
Yeah. It it can be problematic.
It could be.
Our, it could be, yeah. But but right now, with the operations we have now, it hasn't been.
Okay.
Okay, is that?
Do we have a mechanism to like, when there there is a problem, that we can talk to these people and say, maybe you should do things differently, or we may stop the program for everyone?
I, that's an interesting point because if, say, they want to do a barbecue business and they're up really early with their smoker right next to the property line.
Yeah.
And that's allowed under the MECO. And can we, can, like, can we restrict them?
Well, what if it also collides with like a city ordinance, like no noises between, you know, 10 o'clock at night and 6:00 in the morning?
That would be a city enforcement issue.
Okay, so the city would have
Yeah.
jurisdiction there or?
They would. I I I don't know how it conflicts, but yeah, I I think, I can't recall. That question did come up and I did look into it. I just don't remember what the conclusion was. I
Okay.
I don't want to misspeak about what the, what the rules are, but the city theoretically can still enforce its own ordinances.
Okay.
We wouldn't be able to override them.
Because it could be operating in a, in a area that's zoned residential and not commercial so that, you know, they could be making a lot of noise in a place where noise isn't normally the, you know, the occurrence. Okay.
Could we put something in the ordinance that they must comply with the appropriate zoning standards?
I I can, I can look, although I think the way the state program is set up, you either allow it, allow it, or you don't. You don't really get to make adjustments to the, what the state has set up as this micro-enterprise home kitchen. And that's, that's
And be in a residential.
And that's why the board
Apartment even.
was concerned, these same concerns and why you set it up as a, as a pilot program and you limited the numbers to see if there were going to be problems. So we can keep that going, just expand it slightly.
Seems reasonable.
Okay, we'll bring, we'll bring this back.
Okay, so, but direction of staff right now is to allow it to go for another till December of 2024 and allowing up to four permits per year. Is that agreeable with the board? Okay, I got a whole bunch of heads shaking, so I guess that's where we go.
Yes.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Okay, code enforcement, discussion of possible action relative to adding re-establishment of the countywide abandoned vehicle abatement fee of $1 per registered vehicle to the March presidential primary or the November 2024 ballot.
Yes, Supervisors, this was on, at the last meeting and and I was operating under an assumption based on my discussions with the code enforcement officer that, anyway, what started this was elections sent out a notice saying, your deadline for the ballot for, for the March primary is November something. And she said, we need to get this on so the board can approve this. And when she drafted the resolution, which I still need to change a little bit, she put in November 2024, the next general election. So I just wanted to get clarification on what, there's still time for the June primary election or if you want it set for November, that's fine as well. I just, it seems early to do it for November and and I was just in the, so whatever the board's direction is.
It's the March primary this year.
Yeah, we have time for March and that's what I thought, but the way it was drafted and what the board approved was November. And so I didn't feel like I, I needed to bring that back for you guys, gentlemen, to decide which which ballot you wanted on.
You know, I guess one question I'd have, I don't know off the top of my head, which would have a better, which normally has a better success rate for passing items?
They could have a better turnout in November. I, I felt like November was the the better option.
I did, too.
Supervisor Onetto?
Can't we run it in March and if it doesn't go, run it in November?
Negative. Just to keep, you could.
Yeah.
I, I think you're beating a dead horse. Yeah, sorry, sorry, not supposed to use that, those kind of terms, but it's problematic to do that.
I think with the holidays
I think it's problematic not to have, have them pass this, you know?
I agree with you, Supervisor Act. But I think with the holidays, you'd have a tough time with the education factor and that's what it's gonna take. Because they look at it, another tax, no. Unless they take the time to.
Well, why don't we park an abandoned vehicle in their front yard?
We've got one in Jackson now.
It'll, they'll learn real quick. They don't like it.
Did you see that in Jackson? We put flowers on an old truck and parked it out and, welcome to Jackson.
I would propose we do this by consensus and go with November.
Okay with November? Supervisor?
Yeah.
Crew?
I say, keep running it until they, until they pass it.
Right now, it's four to one consensus to run as November. So direction is given to staff?
I I will edit that resolution that you passed at the last meeting for November. Well, it did, it did say November and I'll, I'll present that. There were some edits I wanted to make to.
Changes for next meeting?
Well, we have time now.
Okay.
So I could just bring it back. And we can put it on consent.
I didn't go to the public for Zoom?
No comments at this time.
Okay. Well, we'll go on to 3E, resolution authorizing the Waste Management Department to submit the SB 1383 local assistance grant application.
Good morning.
Morning.
Last meeting. Jeff Gardner, Director of Solid Waste, we're here to get a resolution passed so we can put in our application for the grant, for the SB 1383 second round grant. And I'm gonna let Mary discuss where we're at with that so far, and it's still kind of a moving target. We know how much money we want and we know we need to get it in by the 15th, but we're still fine tuning some of the categories in the grants. So I will let Mary discuss that.
Good morning.
Morning.
And thank you for having us here today. Amador County previously received a SB 1383 grant to start implementation of the organics diversion requirements. At that time, the grant was approximately $130,000. Each of the cities participated and had pooled the money of each of the five cities, so it was a regional grant. Again, this is the second round for the SB 1383, but this time, each of the jurisdictions qualifies for $75,000 for a total of $450,000. The cities have agreed to another regional grant application. And we anticipate that we will continue doing the public education and outreach. We will be improving capacity for the Edible Food Recovery Program with the Interfaith Food Bank. We're anticipating, the first grant, we purchased a 10 by 20 freezer for them to put at their new site, their new warehouse site. At this time, we're looking to purchase another delivery van, pickup and delivery van for them. them, but then the bulk of the money, what we're trying to do is to expand the composting throughout the county. We did backyard composting, we partnered with Master Gardeners and the Motherlode Land Trust, they did, to put on some demonstrations for the public. We plan to enhance that, but in addition, we would like to, again, partner with them and develop a community compost site at the Motherlode Land Trust here in Jackson. In addition to that, we would like to then do satellite compost, community compost in each of the communities or communities that we can work with or who want to work with us, and we would also be trying to pull in other organizations such as FFA, the Boy Scouts, Lions Clubs, Rotary Clubs, to make it a community effort. The budget that you see in front of you is just the preliminary budget. I do anticipate before submitting it on the fifteenth, that we'll have some other refinements, moving monies around, and once the budget is approved, we still can move things around. It's, actually, this Cal Recycle grant is very flexible, provided that you meet their criteria for what it's used for. If you get, you need to get their permission ahead of time or approval ahead of time, we can still move the budget around. And I would also like to point out that this is not a competitive grant, so provided that the criteria, we meet their criteria, Amador County will receive these monies.
You know, I have one question. I, I know all the cities have their green waste facility down there, and, and some they struggle with the state trying to get, you know, permitting and meet all, all that criteria. Will they have the same problems at this site, you think, as far as the permitting? Does it fly under the radar, it's smaller?
It, it is smaller, so it flies, it meets the criteria for a community compost site, and it would fly under the radar.
Okay. Otherwise, that could be a big problem for them.
Yes, yes.
If you had a community compost sites within the cities, would they, would our provider, ACIS, still be required to have a separate composting, compost collection bin?
Currently, Amador County and its cities are exempt from the collection.
Oh, twenty twenty-seven, right?
Till twenty twenty-seven. Once twenty twenty, at this point, we would have to start collections in twenty twenty-seven. However, we anticipate, I should say, it is anticipated that there will be new legislation coming forth this next year, especially in light of the Little Hoover Commission report, that they were very critical of how Cal Recycle is implementing this program. They do believe, and they recommended, that the rural counties that currently receive the exemption for five years, they believe that the county should be exempted from those requirements altogether. They also recommended that the edible food recovery program not be a part of this, because it's already being done by other organizations in most all the jurisdictions. But, so we'll see what happens next year. It very well could be that when twenty twenty-seven hits, you would be required to do the collection, and so we need to be cognizant of that as the time approaches. If this, if, if the legislation does not come through next year, then I would say it's time to start planning. But hopefully, RCRC will be involved in that, that legislation, as well as, you know, other, other groups.
It might, it might make sense to put it in a place where it's densely populated, but not, you know, to, to make them, because it, there's some economy of scale, but if it's, you know, more rural areas where it's not highly populated, then maybe it's not, I don't think it's worthwhile. I guess I'm, I'm a bit confused, because it seems to me the purpose of the law is just to keep from filling up landfills, or I thought it was just to capture, also to capture this stuff and keep it from decomposing into potentially greenhouse gases, methane in particular, and composting is pretty much gonna guarantee that, unless you put it in some kind of sealed system.
They, they actually, Cal Recycle has said that composting releases less greenhouse gases than, than the landfills, and they encourage composting. There, and I, I also would like to point out that they have never, Cal Recycle, to my knowledge, has never evaluated what the transportation costs for our rural counties would, you know, generate in the way of greenhouse gases to try to get it to someplace where they could do it.
Yeah.
One of the things that the Environmental Services Joint Powers Authority from RCRC is considering is, they're considering doing a regional grant for, with thirteen eighty-three, and having jurisdictions participate by donating some money to doing an actual greenhouse gas analysis for the rural areas to show whether or not it makes sense to do it.
Okay.
Any other questions from the board? Okay, call for the motion.
Mr. Chairman, we do have a comment via Zoom.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Caller, if you could, please introduce yourself. Go ahead when ready.
Hi, I am, my name is Kitty Applegar, I'm a new resident in the area. I just, to explain a bit further about the reasoning behind using composting to reduce greenhouse gases, the reason that edible or organic compounds, when put in the garbage, in the trash, produce methane is because of anaerobic, they are not exposed to oxygen, therefore, the anaerobic microbes are what consumes them and produces the methane in the greenhouse gases. Composting, by contrast, exposes this material to oxygen, to open air, and actually sequesters carbon, and so it would actually be highly beneficial for greenhouse gas emissions. Just for some context, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks, makes sense.
If you don't, if you don't have any place to use the compost.
Oh, there's a lot of places.
That's a different problem.
Cause I don't do a garden, I don't do flowers.
Bring it to my house.
Well, we have a compost pile, and we've been putting stuff on it for years, and I don't think we've ever used the compost once.
It just turns into, yeah, it turns into compost dirt.
It just kind of slowly, it keeps going down, it gets big, and then it.
Eventually, it smells like dirt, though.
Yeah.
Well, the idea with, with taking it to the, to the jurisdictions within the county would be to set up a composting program, hopefully, at their, their own community gardens.
Yeah, yeah.
So that would be a good site, and then it would encourage people to do the composting there and bring their stuff there.
Okay.
Ready for an action?
Yes, sir.
I would move to approve resolution authorizing the submittal of SB thirteen eighty-three local assistance grant program, regional application, as the lead participant related, related authorizations and identification of participating jurisdictions for which Amador County is eligible.
Okay, do we have?
Second.
Call for the vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate the presentation. Review and possible approval of October twenty-fourth Board of Supervisors meeting minutes.
Move to approve the minutes with minor corrections I've already submitted to our board clerk.
Yeah, there's one of them. I was having a discussion under the Regurgent Administrative Agency, looks like livestock grazing is mixed up with EID, so that's, like I said, that minor.
Yeah.
I saw that, too, but I don't know, Heather, if you could look, I thought I made a comment on that, but close to the end, doesn't it?
Yeah. So it looks like something's missing somewhere in there, because I think we had a, then we have a bid that, a bid on a grazing contract, that board meeting. I guess, I think that's probably the part that's missing. So if we just include, include that part, like the grazing, if you had a, I think it was that meeting when they had that open bid.
Oh, that was the prior meeting.
Was it the prior meeting?
We can take a look at it and revise that, thank you.
Okay, I'm okay with those revisions in.
Okay, call for the vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, this meeting is adjourned until Tuesday, November twenty-first, nine AM, closed session begins at eight thirty.